To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda.
Vote to approve the agenda of the January 19, 2021 regular meeting as presented.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. We will not be able to respond to your questions at this time. The purpose of this session is for us to listen to you and give you the opportunity to share with us. Per policy BDDH1, public participation in board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. We don't have any comment forms. Next, we have a report of the superintendent.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Well, you'll notice my report, I thought about taking all the snow and snowmen out. Not, no, we're getting it either. But I went ahead and left it on, hopefully we can get our staff, they're begging for one silly. Um, the first thing, under my report, there are a couple of notes of appreciation in your board packet. Um, the second item, um, we will be holding an election for the school board on Tuesday, April 6th. Filing opened on Tuesday, December 15th at 8:00 a.m. It closed today at 5:00 p.m. We have five candidates who filed for two seats. Uh, Jerrilyn, Jerry Diesel, David M. Boba, Lawrence Anthony Fox Jr., Jamie Nagger Ballou, and Josh Carlisle. And I'm gonna check with Jamie to make sure I said her name right because she's in attendance.
Yep, that is correct.
Thank you. So, um, like I said, we will hold an election, those are the five candidates. So remember to get out and vote on April 6th. Um, the next item I have is to remind everyone about kindergarten registration. Uh, St. Genevieve, St. Genevieve Elementary will hold their event on Saturday, March 6th from 8:00 to 12 approximately. Bloomsville Elementary will hold theirs on Saturday, March 27th from 8:00 to 12 approximately again. You can begin scheduling, uh, your appointment on Monday, February 8th. Um, we ask parents if they please make that call if they plan to send their child to kindergarten this fall. We know we've had some students that their parents chose this year to hold them a year, so we're really kind of worried about class hours. So the sooner we can get the information and know your child is coming, the better prepared we can be for this fall. Um, Ms. Gep, does Missus Ben anything I need to add?
No, I believe that's it for our building.
Okay. Dr. Green, anything for the place now? Okay. Uh, moving on. I wanted to go ahead and put this up here. I know our next meeting will be February 16th, but I just started a reminder, Missouri School Board member recognition week is February 14th through the 20th. Um, I do believe we have some items for you tonight, so I will turn it over to Ms. Zuespin and Ms. Gep.
We had our, um, third grade students write you letters of association. We tried to explain to them that you give a lot of your time and you care about the school and come visit, make sure that they're getting all the things that they need to learn. So thank you so much for your time.
And then we also included some thank you notes from staff members, so there are thank you cards in there as well.
These are the best gifts of the year.
Yeah, this might be pretty powerful.
I got a good feeling of from my first appearance.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. That's so true. Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
I called it kiddos because they were.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I won't give away too much, but there will be more fun to tell them February.
Really?
Um, you probably noticed under my report, there are no principal reports this month. Um, we started doing this, I believe, last year, maybe two years ago, because we've only had a couple of weeks of school, um, with middle school and high school, high school and semester transition. So we're just trying to get our feet under it yet, so we, uh, we took that off and we don't have those in January. So that's just a quick reminder, because the principals had to remind me, which I appreciate. Um, there are, let's see, wrong computer. There are earthquake, emergency exit, and fire drill safety reports in your board packet. And the next item is the COVID-19 pandemic and our updates. The biggest update, and Bailey will talk about those a little bit more in her report that she's gonna do here, is that at the middle school and high school, we are going to transition those students that want to attend school more to four days in person, one day virtual, starting next week on Monday, January 25th. We're excited about that possibility and know our staff will do everything they can to make it work. So if any, um, parent or student is uncomfortable with coming more days, they just need to contact the offices, the high school or the middle school, wherever your child attends, and, uh, talk to the building admin about transitioning their child to virtual. So at that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Autumn.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Um, if at any point you can't hear me, just interrupt and tell me that I need to project better. Um, so I've been here since March of 2018, 2018?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. So, right, yeah, that's been a bit. So, uh, one of the things that I wanted, that I had on my department plan was I wanted to, um, start doing an annual, um, presentation to the board like the other departments do. Um, and when I was thinking about that this year, what I decided to do was to pull out all of really the pandemic communications, because all of what's in this presentation tonight, um, all of these communications were really done in tandem with all of the other buildings, um, our nursing staff, the health department, um, all of the administrators, obviously. And I really wanted to give you a clear overview of our communications, um, from the district level through the pandemic. And then maybe, you know, follow up with a, a smaller, uh, department plan, um, a little later. But that way, I thought this might be a little less messy, might give you a better overview of what we've been looking at, um, since last March. Uh, and then at the end, we'll have some updates, um, for you as well. So that, we can get started.
Okay, you just tell me when the transition is.
Sure. So, um, just a quick, uh, quick overview, the purpose of, um, my communications department. Um, I have sort of four tenants that I, that I try to focus on, transparency, just building trust within our communications, um, being systematic. So every time I do, um, a large district communication, I try to do it basically the same way, so that people know where to go to find that information. Um, making sure that we're comprehensive, again, just making sure we're using those, uh, communication mediums in the same way. And then making sure that we're also engaging, um, so, you know, listening, um, answering questions as we go along. So that's really how I see the purpose of my department. And this might be a little small for you to read, so I'll go over it really quickly. Um, the mediums that I utilize, uh, phone, email, internet, media. Uh, for phones, we do voice calls and texts. Um, I always try and bow out of the voice call, I'll help write it, but I, I really, I feel like I'm really not the voice there, so a lot of times I'll try and pass that off to Dr. Taylor. So he's the one who typically sends out those phone calls. Um, text messages, when I got here, uh, we sent out a communications survey, and a lot of our families said that, yeah, sign me up, send more text messages. So, um, we really utilized that this year. Uh, for the emails, we have an all employees email we utilize, um, quite often. And then I also have a list serve for families. So if we have your email on file in Power School, um, I do pull those out for those big district communications. Um, in terms of the internet, so we've got our website, all the buildings also have their own sites, so we'll update the live feed section of those sites. Um, app push notifications, we have an app, St. Jen R2. Uh, it's available wherever, whichever app store you've got, um, Google Play or the App Store. Um, and when you download it, you just have to go into your notification settings and say yes, I do want push notifications. Um, then for internet, we also have social media. So each of the buildings has their own Facebook page, and the district has a Facebook page. We, uh, recently started an Instagram page, and we have a Twitter page. Um, and then also, well, YouTube as well. And then for the media, I have news releases down there. Um, we work with our local media to, to really share all of that information. Um, we really built a bit of a relationship with all of them as well, uh, so they can, if they hear something, they reach out, say, hey, I heard about this. Um, and I really, I really appreciate that, because then I can give them more information, um, and we, we can just go from there. So audience message, um, and again, this is just to give you a quick overview, since we haven't really done this before. But, um, so I'm always thinking in terms of stakeholders, so our families includes the students, parents, and their guardians, um, our faculty and staff, that also, um, and when I'm thinking of them, I'm also thinking of all of you, uh, board members, um, the, the district neighbors, um, geographically, um, media, uh, partners in the community, community members, residents, um, local businesses. So that's really where my mind's at. And then when we're putting together messages, you really wanna make sure that, um, depending on who you're reaching out to, that you're really tailoring that message to that particular group of stakeholders, um, so that they know that they're getting what they need to know, um, quickly and easily. And always thinking about the purpose of a message, um, I always think back to, um, Mrs. O'Brien's high school class when I think of these. Uh, you know, are we educating? Are we informing? Um, is it a rally to action? A rally to action can also be sort of, uh, if we're going to engage, so thinking about surveys. Uh, clarifying event status, I added that this year. Uh, you know, and addressing rumors, that's always on there too, um, and then just satisfying media requests. So again, when they hear things in the community, they reach out with, with further questions. So this I, I created in particular because of the pandemic. So I've got two goals that, you know, for our district that I try to keep in mind. Um, and that's, one, providing timely, transparent information on the district's decisions and actions, um, toward preventing the spread of COVID-19 in our community. And number two, providing reassurance and support to all of our stakeholders, um, that I mentioned earlier, while providing access to credible, helpful resources. And, you know, if there, you know, our priority is always, and I really wanna reiterate this, um, our priority is always the safety of our faculty, staff, and students. That's, that's what we're thinking of first. I thought the timeline might be helpful, um, just to give you a sense of sort of the, the big, well, I guess the biggest things that come to mind when I think of communications, because when we get a little further into the presentation, we'll see we really send out quite a few. So, um, the big ones to hit, March 18th is when we announced school closure. Um, that only went through April 3rd, and that was extended. And then Governor Carson, um, closed schools for the rest of the school year. Um, in July, we shared a reopening survey for our staff and our families. Um, we had a committee of staff members then convene at the pack of using safety preventative measures and discuss reopening. We followed that up with, um, uh, uh, applications for families to be able to choose their instructional options for their students. Shared our first version of the reopening plan in early August, and then the first day of school was August 24th. October 10th, we had another survey, this one was for staff and students and families. Um, we shared our COVID-19 dashboard in early December, and I'll show you a little bit about that later. And then we shared our transition plan, um, January 15th. So the transition plan, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, that's the, uh, the four in one learning model that our sixth to 12th grade kiddos will begin on January 25th. Um, just quickly, I wanna go over, uh, my objectives here. So one objective, we've already talked about it, but being transparent, proactive communications. So we try to do this at the onset, um, proactive meaning that we're answering your questions before you can ask them. Um, I find that that's very helpful. Um, and prioritizing communications. So we try to share communications with our faculty, staff, and board members first, um, and just give them a little bit of time with that information. And that, you know, that helps build trust, but it also helps them, um, in their role as ambassadors for the district. If they understand the rationale behind decisions, if they get the questions, they can answer them. And I find that that's really useful. Um, the next one, ensuring that all kinds of is factual, vetted, and approved for dissemination. That was really important this year, because we worked hand in hand with the health department, um, and the hospital on basically every part of our reopening plan. Um, so just making sure that that collaboration is there and making sure that everybody had everything before we shared it. Uh, objective number three, focusing on engagement. Um, so again, that's looking back at those surveys, those committees. Um, the calendar committee also met and added a PD day for our faculty and staff, because we realized that was something that they, um, that they really felt that they needed. And that also includes, you know, those personal emails, the, um, anecdotal check-ins, all of that. The next one, I'm just ensuring that everything is really consistent and that we're including instructions, resources, and next steps. So it's not just, hey, this is what's happening this week, there's, here's how to finish it, here's when it needs to be done, here's the information we need to make that decision. Um, so that included really all of our safety and preventative measures that we included in the reopening plans, all of the staff training and the PD days, um, all of the information families needed for the free food service program we have, um, all the information for the learning options, technology resources, and then, you know, events, athletics, and activities. And over there, I've got an overview, that's the first page of our transition page. And then the last objective is just, uh, it's just a little reminder that, you know, we're all human and we're sending out all of this communication, but making sure that, you know, we allow ourselves to sound human. It's a lot of information, and a lot of times we're just trying to get it out and make sure it's factual, but making sure that we, we allow ourselves to put in that everything in compassion and take the time. Um, I think we do that really well. This is just an overview of the way that, the type of communication broke down. Social media looks large, um, and that's just because we have so many social media accounts. Uh, there's something like 540 communications that are specific to COVID, um, and then this ends up being the breakdown. So we've got social media here, emails to employees, text messages, push notifications, emails to families, news releases, uh, the calls, and then we also, this year, um, really utilize our e-newsletters. Uh, we have one to faculty staff and one to parents and guardians. And then we also did two editions of the Dragon Digest, um, since the pandemic began. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of our social media pages and how they have fared since, uh, the start of the pandemic. So impressions, that's the number of times that the content is displayed to users. So it's not the number of times, or the number of users who see it. So one person could have seen something three times. But it is over a million impressions since the start of the pandemic through Facebook. Engagements, that is where they actually comment, like, share, um, they click something that has to do with our post. So I thought that was interesting, almost 100,000. Um, our followers went up, our page likes went up, that makes sense. Um, Facebook is mostly for our parents and community members, um, and, you know, learning, going virtual. It made sense that they wanted to follow and see all of the information, um, as soon as we shared it. Um, oh, yeah. I pulled some of the posts that, um, fared best. Uh, the first great version of the reopening plan, um, our food service, those ladies, um, were wonderful. This was a, some photos of the grab and go and the delivery that we had going on over, um, last spring, um, and some updates to food service. That was the, uh, the pre-meets. Uh, Twitter, so Twitter is actually, um, primarily dealing with our, um, athletics, our faculty and staff around there. We don't really see as many parents and students. So, um, the, you know, feeding all those 90,000 impressions, that's pretty, that's up there. Um, the tweets that kind of made it to the top, um, were tweets about events, um, and activities. Instagram, we launched this in January 2020, so, um, it's kind of hard to figure how it would have done a year prior. So we do have 871 followers, and most of those are students. So we really try to include content, um, you know, that, that they feel like they need to know. Um, some of the things that tripled, uh, that were boosted to the top were, um, obviously our graduation, um, and, and military ceremony, and then also our veterans parade. YouTube, um, I just wanted to put this on there as well. So we had nine, over 1,900 views, uh, since March 2020. And, um, there's a screenshot there, that was our virtual meeting. Uh, and those are views specific to, I'm sorry, those are views specific to board meetings. So we have been recording each meeting and uploading it the next day. That doesn't include any of the events that, that are posted on YouTube. Uh, this is the, it's very difficult to see here. So if you go to our website, there's a button up on the top where it says COVID-19, and you click that, it'll take you to our COVID-19 page, where you can see this dashboard, it's the little table down here to the left. And those are the active positive cases for students and staff at SBR2. It does not mean that they were on campus, um, when, when they were positive. It just means that if there's a student or staff member who is currently positive, that number will be included there. So the dashboard is somewhat new, we shared it halfway through December. Um, and we, we decided to go and do this because at, at one point, we were sending out so many notifications for positive, uh, uh, positive cases, that we were hearing there was just fatigue. You know, at some point, you just get too many. So, um, anyone can go onto our website there at any time and see where we're at. Um, these are just, uh, various social media, if you wanna follow us. All of our COVID-19, uh, updates are on that page that I mentioned. So, um, you can, you know, go to our website and click the button on the front, um, or it's just bit.ly backslash SGR2COVID-19. Um, and that is, uh, I, I cluster that everywhere. So it's in the Dragon Digest if you need to see it. And then I think there's, and then this is just a compilation of smiles from around the district. We decided to, um, use this in the last Dragon's Digest, because our kids are so good about wearing their masks in the buildings, but you just wanna see their smiles. So, um, so we made sure to, uh, to make a page that was dedicated, um, just to their smiles, socially distanced, of course. Um, and just to remember that, you know, we're all with them together. So, um, back really quickly to the transition, so that's gonna start on the 25th. Um, we shared the latest plan, and it's actually the transition plan slash reopening version number five. Um, it's on our website, if you wanna check it out. The first page is all of the information. It's a quick overview of what parents and families and students might want to know about the six to 12 kiddos moving, um, coming back for more in-person instructional days. Um, and also, you know, if you, if they haven't read it, um, the virtual day will now be Wednesday, not Friday. Um, more, more information will be, um, is being given through the schools. I don't know if you guys wanna add anything while I'm... No? Yeah? I mean, they're good to go, so we're, we're good to go. If you, if you do have any questions, um, feel free to reach out. And I think that's all I have.
I, I do wanna say that I only say no as a compliment to Bailey. Um, I don't have anything to add, because she's done an outstanding job of communicating on behalf of the school and on behalf of the buildings, and has really gone out of her way to stay in touch with us to make sure that she's communicating the specific information that applies to our building. So thank you for that, Bailey.
Appreciate that.
I've heard positive, uh, remarks about starting this school. And I think that brings it off.
Here's the.
They're truly our heroes. We are definitely heroes, all of you, and the teachers, and everybody. We should have a sign down in front.
And that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you. And Bailey, thank you also, I would have said enough, but even before COVID, I thought things were improving in communications, and I don't know what we would have done this past year, so, thank you.
Oh, I appreciate that. But like I said, I, I really wanted to put together a presentation of everything COVID-related, pandemic-related, because it was such a group effort, that I felt it shouldn't be, you know, a department presentation. But, um, every, everyone who, who had a hand in that was, was so incredibly wonderful working through this past year, so.
Thanks to the staff and administration for what we're gonna try next week. I've also heard several positive comments from parents, so I appreciate all the effort and all the work. Next, we have unfinished business, CNE, on to new business proposed calendar for 2021, 2022.
Yes. So as a reminder, this draft is basically a copy of our current calendar. Sorry, I'm trying to get things to work. Um, so it, it's ba, it's a mirror image. Um, so it just takes, um, where we started and just transfers dates over. Um, I will scroll down through here, and as I go, I'll identify some issues. Um, well, this isn't an issue, but in August, the board did set the mission dead carry for activities for the summer of 2021 for July 31st through August 8th. So that is set. Um, I would encourage parents that have athletes that do plan, want to make some vacation plans, to go ahead and, uh, get that done, because that is set, and that should not change. Um, if you go through here, I'm gonna show you November, because one of the things that the calendar committee did talk about this afternoon was this, that, um, Veterans Day is on Thursday, and Veterans Day has always been a holiday and celebrated here at St. Jen. So we will be off on November 11th, but, uh, the committee for right now is, is suggesting, and this may change, that we go ahead and have school on Friday, November 12th, um, because of the imbalance in days in the semester. The other thing that the committee did discuss, because if you just transfer the days over, we look here at December, that means that Christmas break would begin after the 17th, which is kind of early, um, because Christmas is not until the following week, and it's on Saturday. So the committee will look at adjusting and pushing the day before Christmas Day, Christmas break, into the week of the 20th. Um, if we go back up to the top, looking at January, I think maybe you're looking at the calendar sometime. Um, this is just a copy of the current calendar. Um, the one change, sorry about that. The one change that had to be made was here in February. Currently, we have a professional development day on Friday, February 12th? Thank you. That was supposed to be, um, a big professional development day with, um, Jefferson R7, Herculaneum, and Windsor. We call it the River Professional Development Event. And for this year, we are not going to hold that, of course, because of COVID and social distancing, and, uh, it didn't make sense to put all those people in one place. Um, so we are not gonna host it, hold it this year. So we're going to have an in-house professional development day, which Dr. Taylor and the PD committee are working on. Um, but the corresponding date for next year, it had to be moved back to the 18th. So next year, um, I believe, I think it's hosted by Windsor, and then St. Genevieve will host this event in 2223. So we're excited about that opportunity and the collaboration that it'll offer our teachers. Because they did hold it without us this past year, because we'd already set our calendar and we couldn't make the changes to meet the date. And they had really good reviews from the teachers, their teachers that did participate. Um, so really, there's no other major concerns right now. The last day of school will be on May 28th and graduation on the 21st. So again, this is just kind of a mirror image, just to kind of get a feel for what it could look like. Um, the calendar committee is kicking around some ideas, and I will pick you up there as we work to try to get this to you on February 16th for approval. Okay? Do you have any questions?
Uh, next we have a board resolution on COVID-19 lead.
Yes. Uh, so we waited on this resolution, because we were hopeful that the federal government would extend it. And the federal government did not extend it, but... And the federal government did not extend it, but they did put in place that Families' First Coronavirus Response Act, those employers covered by the FFCRA could voluntarily extend the leaves. So, the two leaves under the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act are the Emergency Paid Sick Leave, which gives an employee 80 hours, so 10 days of absence due to COVID. It also added in an Emergency Family Medical Leave Act, which put more days out there for those people who have COVID. These two acts expired on December 31st, December 31st. So, this resolution will only extend the Emergency Paid Sick Leave. It will not add days to it, because we have employees who took all of those days from March to May, and so when they started this school year, they did not get any new days. It's 10 total days from, is it April 1st, 2020, through March 31st, 2021. So, with this resolution, you would just extend the Emergency Paid Sick Leave from January 1st through March 31st. Right now, they're suggesting March 31st, because hopefully by then, school employees will have had access to the vaccine if they so choose to get it. We cannot mandate that anybody gets it, but we're hoping by then that the employees that want it can have it. I did go ahead and put it at the bottom, because we have had some questions. This paid sick leave act only applies to full-time and part-time employees. It does not extend to our substitutes, because they are not employees of this school this year, and do not qualify for any benefits. Do you have any questions? I know you've had the resolution, and you've been able to read it. Okay.
I move to approve the following board resolution on COVID-19 leave as presented.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, and I think Mr. Bubba has the resolution that he and Mr. McDaniel will need to sign to the act.
Next, we have action for closed meeting.
I move that the Board of Education for closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote, and the regular open meeting on January 19, 2021, will be held at the R.W. Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. John's Reserve, for purposes of discussing and voting upon the following items. Legal action, cause of action, or litigation, hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identified individuals. A further move to notice this meeting and the intended agenda be focused as required by law.
Second.
Motion for the second, roll call, Eric Bauter?
Yes.
Kevin Bubba?
Yes.
Joan Look?
Yes.
Jan Brechner?
Yes.
Karen Gangl?
Yes.
Richard Rulo?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
I'll move to go to a closed session with a closed record and a closed vote, enter short break. One second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries.